I'd like to call this session of the Planning Commission to order. Could the clerk please read the roll?
Mr. Badger?
Yes, here.
Mr. Halter?
Here.
Mr. Proll?
Here.
Mr. Volnek?
Counselman Hellinger?
Here.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Here.
Chairman Simpson?
Here. Motion to excuse our absent member.
Second.
Motion by Chairman, or Commissioner Hellinger and a second by Commissioner Badger.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Counselman Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes. Okay, item number two, the approval of the motion summary of the Planning Commission meeting held on June 7, 2017. What is the wish of the commission? Make a motion to approve? All right. I have a motion by Mr. Proll.
Second.
Second by Mr. Halter.
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Proll?
Yes.
Counselman Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes. All right. Moving on to the next item, regular business. Could the, please read item A into the record.
Item A, Burr Oak Commons, number one, 2017-1394. The request by Triplus Communities for approval of a zoning amendment from B3 Community Business District to B3 PMU, Plan Mixed Use Overlay District for Burr Oak Commons containing 92 apartment units on approximately 20.06 acres located on the north side of State Route 37, just west of Westfield Shopping Center and just east of Lantern Chase subdivision. Item two, 2017-1395, request by Triplus Communities for approval of a conditional use permit allowing the placement of a PMU Plan Mixed Use Overlay District for Burr Oak Commons containing 92 apartment units on approximately 20.06 acres located on the north side of State Route 37, just west of Westfield Shopping Center and just east of Lantern Chase subdivision. Item three, 2017-1396, a request by Triplus Communities for approval of a preliminary development plan for Burr Oak Commons containing 92 apartment units on approximately 20.06 acre Zone B3 PMU and located on the north side of State Route 37, just west of Westfield Shopping Center and just east of Lantern Chase subdivision.
Thank you, Stacy. To give some background on this, back in May of this year, the applicant presented a concept plan to this commission for review. Now they're taking the next step to do the rezoning, come their development plan and conditional use permit. And just to remind you, they're proposing 92 single-family apartment units on the 20 acres for a density of 4.58 units per acre. The one, two, and two-plus bedroom units would range from 1,100 to 1,600 square feet. The zoning of this site is B3, which is a community business district, and uses allowed in there are the code, which is next to this. All those uses will be permitted and several other commercial uses and the like. From a comprehensive land use perspective, this is in the Delaware Run sub area, and the comprehensive land use plan has this area identified as a mixed-use area. And that is defined as a land use on an individual site that provides a transition between adjacent uses using creative site design approaches. This is a rezoning to a PMU, which allows such site design criteria to be implemented in the layout of the development. Some of the land use recommendations that are applicable to this area is the completion of current residential development is ported as long as it's in the same density as what's around it. And to the east of this are apartments, to the north and west is single-family, and to the south are apartments. And obviously, Plaza, Westfield Hill Shopping Center to the east, southeast of the site. In conclusion, although the proposed apartment complex, Lantern Chase subdivision, and Westfield Shopping Center are developed on different parcels at different times by different developers, but would be considered a single mixed-use development if developed concurrently per today's standards would create a additional buffer between the existing single-family and Lantern Chase and the commercial Westfield Hill Shopping Center on the subject site. Therefore, it appears the proposed apartment development would likely be compatible with the existing land use than most commercial uses currently allowed on the B3 zoning property with a proposed apartment development of appropriate size, scale, buffering, and building materials to the adjacent single-family residents to the north and west. It's important to have the scale and the buffering appropriate to the adjacent residents. From a zoning perspective, they're proposing a Plan Mixed Use Overlay District, and that gives the greatest flexibility and get the most control to the city and the applicant over the redevelopment of the property. In this instance, the preservation of the highly sensitive property and required buffering adjacent to the single-family residents could be most effectively achieved by the planned district requirements. From an engineering perspective, the engineers prepared a memo that included in your report that it outlines some of the transportation, sanitary sewer, stormwater, water distribution, and other issues on the site. This is the area of the site. The northern portion of the site is relatively flat and vacant. The southern portion of the site that you go towards State Route 37 becomes more trees and grains in that area, no more environmentally characteristics and sensitive area in that area. This is the proposed site plan. North is to your left on this site. The primary access to this site would be a full movement curb cut on State Route 37. A secondary access to this site would be through the Westfield Hill Shopping Center through an existing easement that was dedicated when that shopping center was constructed to access this site. Also, a requirement would be an eastbound left-hand turn lane into the site that would be built per the engineering standards. The internal roads which are looped through this site would be private roads, but they'd be built with public standards per city engineering standards. From an emergency access perspective, fire department and police department are requesting an emergency access third way into the site. Currently, the developer and the city are looking at five potential options to access this site, and those options need to be filtered down to a single option prior to final development plan approval. Pedestrian connectivity, there's a bike path along US 30, or State Route 37 in this area. It's up to the applicant to extend and construct that bike path per city standards. Also, they're proposing a pedestrian route from the bike path and from the shopping center north through the site and potentially to the subdivision along Farm Hill Drive to the north. However, there are some factors that could impede that. That path would literally go through a detention basin. Also, the subject property is not owned by the applicant, but the Lantern Chase Homeowners Association. And thirdly, the adjacent neighbor immediately to the west has expressed concerns about the pathway. We need to address that before final development plan also. From a site plan perspective, the 92 units would be in 25 buildings. Each building would have a patio or deck depending on the grade of the site. There would be a common building, clubhouse, if you will, along the southern portion of the site for the entire development. Also, the site would have 371 parking spaces with 164 garage spaces, 164 driveway spaces, 23 overflow spaces, and 20 spaces adjacent to the commons area. The 92 units and 25 buildings would be divided into 21 bedroom units, 34 two-bedroom units, and 38 two-plus bedroom units. Approximately 80% of the building, 80% of the units would be two units and larger, or two units, while 20% would be one unit. And again, the apartment size would be between 1,100 to 1,600 square feet. Some of the amenities would include gourmet kitchens, stainless steel appliances, granite countertops, universal design with, which includes no-step showers, entrances, wide halls, LED lights, the trash totes, placement tools from the garages, bulk removal, onsite management, and home check-in when the residents are traveling. The common area would have, would include a fitness center, business center, club room, cards, yoga, book, club, event activities, patio and fire pit, and a cafe with Wi-Fi. From a landscaping and screening perspective, a comprehensive landscape plan includes private street trees. Foundation landscaping and perimeter mounding has been submitted and reviewed by staff. Street trees and foundation planning appear to achieve compliance with the code. From a buffering and screening perspective, the applicant has agreed to install a buffer to the north and to the west adjacent to the single-family residents that would total 12 feet high with the combination of mounding and pine trees to get that 12-foot buffer. Minimum four-foot high mound, minimum tree size would be six foot. Total 12, the trees could be larger, and the mounding could be larger to get that 12-foot buffer. Also, from a tree removal replacement perspective, as I indicated, there are several trees mostly on the southern portion of the site. They have identified 488 trees that encompasses over 4,400 calories per inches. They haven't determined how many trees will be removed yet because they haven't done a final grading plan to make that determination. Again, that would be required at final development plan submission. Staff believes the trees in the southern, eastern portion of the site could be placed in a permanent tree preservation easement or preserve. It could be potentially counted towards the removal of any trees on the site. From a gateways and corridor perspective, they are proposing signage along US 37 and a secondary sign at the Westfield Hill Shopping entrance into the site. It would have to meet our minimum zoning requirements to meet the gateways and corridors plan. From a lighting perspective, they're proposing 60 black light poles with goose neck fixtures that would be 16 feet high throughout the development. The illumination plan and the lighting plan would have to be approved by the chief building official with meet our minimum zoning requirements. From a refuse perspective, they'd be using tip cart collection, and it'd be, the city would pick those up and they'd be located at the end of each driveway. A community impact assessment was submitted and reviewed by staff, and it appears to meet all the minimal requirements. It would not impact the general health, safety, and general welfare of the community. It appears all the additional use conditions have been met in the development. From a building code, from a building elevation perspective, the developers proposed an elevation to portray a modern architectural style. You can see there's a lot of limestone Delaware, blue vein limestone on the walls and wainscoting on the site. There would be vertical siding, there'd be horizontal siding that would be upgraded siding, there'd be dimensional shingles on the development, and all the appearances, downspouts, and the like would have to be white and would have to match the development. Therefore, staff approves the rezoning amendment with one condition, that includes the development text in the packet, the conditional use permit with zero conditions, and the preliminary development plan with 11 conditions. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, just to summarize a bit Lance's report, first of all, I'd like to thank Jane and Ann and their team, who are pretty much seated in the front row here, for working with us as staff to this point. And I know there's been some community discussions as well. Obviously, you've had a concept plan before you, but in my opinion, they've been very good to work with up to this point, and I look forward to continuing those efforts. They've been very responsive to questions and comments and dialogue to arrive at the point we are tonight, so I appreciate your effort, so thank you. No matter how, thanks go out, appreciate it. What kind of five points about this that separated a little bit from apartment development? Because I think sometimes people hear it's apartment development, and that's not good for whatever reasons people may think of those. I think in this case, the five things that really strike me are, number one, these are senior restricted units. I think that's a pretty important thing, not just by a pledge by the developer, although that is their business model, so it's really more than a pledge. I'm sure Jane will talk about that. But you'll see in the zoning text, and this is one advantage of using the PMU text approach, the text actually requires that to be the case, so it really gives some more teeth to that statement. And I think the universal design approach of the units, and I'm sure again Jane will talk a little bit more about that, lend themselves to that demographic. We will see that, we have seen that, and you've heard me say it before, we will see this more and more, not just here in Delaware, but throughout the country and throughout Ohio as well as population ages. It's just simply a fact of what's going on, and housing's starting to transition a little bit into more of a mix. I think it's important to recall that this is Zone B3, Community Commercial District. That's our, pretty much our universal commercial district throughout the city. So you could have everything from family dollars to strip centers to storage units to all kinds of things by right under B3, and we'd just be going through a development plan process and not rezoning in a very specific zoning text process. It seems to me on this piece of ground, how it sits between the true apartments Troy Farms, Westfield Hills, and single-family homes, it really is begging for a good transitional use in this case. I think that's what we have here. Number three, I think, you know, it's only 92 dwelling units, which is really less than we've ever had proposed on this site before for 20-acre site that leads to density of about four and a half dwelling units per acre, which is pretty minimal. And certainly less minimal than if you lived in this all up with retail or commercial office use. As you recall, 2006, we had, some of you will recall, 2006, we had a proposal that had just on the back half of this, a density of close to eight to 10 dwelling units per acre. Almost all these units just clustered on the back half and a bunch of retail and commercial on the front. That got approved by Planning Commission, and with the economy and other things going on at the time, it didn't make it to City Council. But just for a little, by way of a little history there. Again, I think that PMU text is a critical element to this as well, and gives us the most control that we can have as a city on various elements of this plan. And lastly, I think it's important to know, especially with the grades involved here and the transition of these uses, the buffering that's proposed, having a single-story rather than a two-story design really will lend itself, but most houses are two stories, most of the Troy Farm apartments, all of Troy Farm apartments are two stories. Obviously, the shopping centers, commercial height. But really, transitioning down into one story here combined with the buffering, obviously, it's going to, you've got a plant, it's going to take a little while, but I think even at the initial height, that one-story effect will make a big difference over two stories. And I believe the last proposal had two-story elements in it as well, and that wouldn't be unusual, obviously, for condominiums or apartments. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions as staff, and look forward to the discussion.
Just one question. If they're going to use the shopping center as an entrance, will the city maintain that? Will that become a street going across there? Do you maintain it?
No, across the shopping center, and I don't know if you can kind of circle it with the mouse or something there Lance, the pointers don't work too well on the TVs, but that's a ingress egress easement between, private between the two entities.
So cities will not have to maintain that?
City will not maintain it. The roads throughout the development will also be private, so the city won't maintain those either. They'll be built, everyone will be built to following standards.
I had, I have no problem with the whole project, other than I'm a little bit concerned about what's happening on 37. The distance between the private road access and Lantern Chase, I think I've resolved that, but there's a right turn lane into Lantern Chase, there's not a proposed right turn lane into the new development. I don't think that's really a necessity for the size of this compared to Lantern Chase, but I was concerned about the proximity distance and somebody putting a turn signal on, thinking they're going into Lantern Chase and somebody, or they're going into the private development and somebody coming out at Lantern Chase. But I think there's enough distance there. I think I see like 350 feet or better, and it's only 35 miles an hour, so and the site distance is really good. But that was going to be my main concern, and it doesn't show on here what the distance from the private drive to actual Lantern Chase is. I'm guessing 500 feet maybe.
Matt or Carrie, you want to?
It's probably just shy of 500 feet, and I wouldn't want to see it any closer myself. That's about as far as they could push it away though, without having to really have a undesirable curve in their private street as it approaches Central. And it is right, it is below the threshold for right turn decel lane because of the density. Past proposals we've seen over the decade and a half I've been here did require because of the trips generated and a lot more density. But if people would obviously drive the speed limit, that helps too.
It's true in all cases.
It is.
That, I feel comfortable with that. I just, I didn't know what the distance actually was, and it isn't that steep a grade, and it's very good site distance, but I just want to make sure we've considered it.
And I see the engineer in the audience here, and hopefully he might have a scale. He might be able to give us a distance here before too long as well. Did bring a scale. So we'll get back with you.
Well, I see 350 feet from the proposed private drive down to where the right turn lane goes in, and the right turn lane is probably 100 feet or better, so it's probably 500 feet. If that's the case, I don't have any real significant problems with that.
I think it might be just shy of it, so I wouldn't want to see it any closer.
Yeah, okay.
Right at 500, center line, center line.
Right at 500? Good eye, Bob.
I didn't see it. I couldn't be a good eye because I didn't see it on there. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? The, under the staff recommendations, number six, I think it's number six there, is that the one that you're talking about could include the southern and eastern portion of an easement or, you know, preservation, permanent preservation, but it's not in there currently, right? Correct. Have you had discussions with the applicant on that? And? We have, and that, see the area between the main drive and the shopping center? That's got quite a bit of the pocket slope. Yeah. As well as trees. We have a full tree survey, I think that was in your packet, so sometimes those can be hard to read. But essentially, the bulk of the trees are concentrated in that part of the development and along the stream corridor on the east. And there are other pockets of trees, obviously. But the idea would be that either, given in the tree schedule and the zoning text, the applicant would meet replanting, removal of trees, onsite, offsite, or payment in lieu of, or as we've done with, I think I can say every plan development, do a permanent preserve around existing tree stands that meet the schedule outlined in the text. And that's definitely one area that I think we're all focused on, trying to do that with and maintain some of that green space in it. But there are other pockets as well, as you can see along the stream corridor and kind of just north of the proposed pond area. The idea, I'm sure from the applicant, would be to try to balance the removal with the permanent preservation. That would be our idea of staff too, and then any, any balance to that would have to be the schedule outlined in the text and the typical approach.
Going back to the easement in the shopping center, the signage that will probably be needed there, will that be expensed by the city or will that be expensed by the developer?
The developer.
And what signage do you anticipate having to be put there?
I think we still need to work those details out. Basically, a sort of a secondary entrance sign to the development. And you're coming through an access easement, you're going to have this little road that comes down to the development, and they just want to have a secondary entrance feature there. The primary is certainly along 37. All right. There are no other questions for staff. I'll ask the applicant to come forward, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Jane Arthur Roslevic, 1515 Leach Shore Drive, Columbus Street 204.
I'm Steve Martin, I'm an attorney, manager, and firm in Bertram, 50 North Sandusky Street, Delaware. I have been involved with this property for about 25 years, and although I'm not an engineer, I can address a factor that came up in 2006 regarding, at that point in time, they were looking at a decel lane. And there's also, there was a six-inch major gas line just north of the road right of way that was problematic at that time on 2006. As far as the easement, the easement was put on when Troy Farms sold the property, but it was revised in 2006 and changed. It is purely a private easement, there is a maintenance agreement in place, and the city was involved in 2006 with the provisions in that agreement, and it's basically no cost at all on the city. Jane, you want to?
I want to thank all of you for tonight. I especially want to thank David and Lance and Carrie and Matt and the rest of the staff. I mean, it's really been a pleasure working with them. And it's also been really nice to meet with the HOA. We've met with the board of the HOA, we had an open meeting, and we've gotten some really good feedback. And I actually met with Matthew, who's in the audience, who owns, Matthew Marquise, who owns the property adjacent to the detention pond and the discussion for the egress, which I'm sure we're going to talk about later. I also just want to take a minute and introduce this fabulous, I don't do this, all of us do this, and Stephen Hicks, and my brother Jeff Arthur, Brad Parrish is from Arcall, our architect, and Chad Buckley from CEC, and then my sister, Ann Arthur Cook. And this is Trupless Communities, I'm sure if you've heard of us, that would be quite surprising. We're a family-owned company, actually, owned by Ann, Jane, and Jeff. We were born in May, St. Columbus. Our father has been in real estate development since the 60s, and he was an attorney by trade and partnered with a large apartment developer starting in the 60s. And somehow, we all, three of us, wound up in this business. We, a few years ago, identified that there was a need for 55-plus housing. Actually, my sister and I both fit the demographic, we were looking for places to live. And since we have a development background, we decided, we have two projects, one's under construction in Delaware, it's called Hawthorne Commons, and the other one starts construction on August 15, God willing, in Pickerington. So, and we are really excited. Delaware was very much, and we had met with David, and Barry just wanted to identify his property, and this really fit our niche. We develop, we build, we hold, and we manage. We develop, we build, we hold, and we manage our properties. And we do have some people who invest in our properties, but it is very important for us, when we're looking at ground, that it is not a lot. This is, we do market feasibility studies, we really do understand, our site selection is very, very, it's probably the most important part of our entire process. It's important for us to be in a suburban town that has wants more 55-plus housing because they want to retain the people who live in their communities, and in some cases, they get people from outside their communities who are desirous, especially with something like Ohio Westland being right in your backyard. They love the, just a lot of amenities that the city has to offer. We also look for, you know, access to parks and retail, and our, we've done a fair amount of focus group studies where they have told us what's important to them. One of the things that's not important to them are swimming pools, so our development will not have swimming pools. We will have, in our landscape plan, a community garden, which is something, it's not large, but it's manageable enough, and a source of amenity for our client. We're also all single-story, they range from 1,100 to 1,600 square feet, and they're a universal design, and I'll just speak to that briefly. It's very rare to find a development that's universal design, and what that encompasses is no step entrances or no steps throughout the units. So finding ground is always a lot of fun, that makes that work and not too expensive to do the engineering. Wide hallways, task lighting is very important, lever handles, doors. We really want people to have the opportunity to age in place, as I'm sure that you're well aware, it's expensive to get old, and a lot of people do want to downsize, and downsizing, we do not offer any medical assist living, nothing like that. There are enough services that are either in business or will be seeing an increase where people can have in-home, if there's a need for, you know, somebody to come in and take care of it, or clean your home or something, we're going to be seeing that. We're seeing already in Delaware as well, that people are moving family members from outside the state to our development because they want their parents near them and their grandchildren. So, you know, it's, we look at it as a real amenity to that. 55-plus, we are hope we're compliant, and that is also very important to our resident, that they're pretty much guaranteed that they aren't going to have to deal with tricycles, et cetera. We also offer a commons center with all the amenities that Lance had talked about, and we have event planning for, we really want, we have a, we have two full-time staff members, one's property manager, one's a facility manager, and then a part-time person who helps the residents plan events within the community and surrounding community. Our amenity is Lance addressed, and then we also have a concierge service that is only for our residents, and it's actually, you can reach them by email, an app, or my phone. And they can help do anything from finding you somebody to restore your furniture to or repeat that, so, which is really a nice benefit for our residents. We really feel that this fits the Delaware comprehensive plan, and we actually are finding out that a lot of communities would like to have the small development, one-story. We opt, and with our two-car and one-car attached garages, that's also a benefit to our units. This piece of property is not an easy one to develop, there's a lot of topography, and I think we've spent a good amount of time, and CEC has really helped us figure out how to develop it, as well as Arcall, you know, getting the highest and best use of this that fits our product. We're very much a brand, and we want this to carry through all the communities that we've done, that we have. Pretty much, that's what I've got for you. We are excited about being in Delaware, and look forward to the process.
Would you like to hear from the architect or the engineer on any issues or questions?
Any other questions for the applicant? So, just a couple of statements I want to make. So I noticed that it is 55 and older living, and it is luxury as well. What do you see in terms of trends with your current residents in terms of the number of cars they tend to have per household? Just kind of talk a little bit about that.
Well, right now, I would say one per person who lives, if you read the way the direction of the world's going, they might wind up with none, or just one, and we kind of laugh because some of these units will have two-car garages, and we're thinking, well, you know, they're going to have a big two-car garage. So, you know, our client, our client is, maybe some of them still work outside of the home, a lot of them might be consultants and work in the home, and that's one of the reasons our community center is very much geared towards, we have a business center, which also has a conference table, so that they can have, you know, if they need to do, have a meeting or have a phone call, they can do that up there. But for the most part, our average age is, you're looking at around 60, early 60s is who our average age is, so.
What do you anticipate, or what are you seeing in terms of price points for the units for rentals in the current market?
In the current market, as it relates to us, or as it relates to competitors?
I guess as it relates to you.
As it relates to us. You know, it's a, that's a really great question, and this is something that I think across the country, that the people who do market feasibility studies are really trying to grasp, because right now, really, the, our market, everybody's marketing, the developers in downtown Columbus, or even downtown Delaware, who have smaller units, are really marketing to the 55-plus market. They're coming up short in that the units are so small and so non-functional, and not everybody wants to live with millennials. So, you know, if you were to put our projects in downtown Columbus, you know, we would be cheap. But when you look at it, and I know that there are some reservations, and our rents are, it's, do you want to look at us compared to Willowbrook, or do you want to compare ourselves to Redwood? And we fall somewhere in between. Again, we're more affordable for aging in place, but, but, I mean, it's, it's, we've done a study in the focus group, and we feel very confident, we wouldn't do this if we didn't think.
Oh, sure.
We've been prepared to do that, so. It's cheaper to rent, and you don't have to replace your roof.
Always will be.
Yeah. You don't have to pay for your furnace, we can pay for your furnace. So, and if, when it goes out, we've got 24 on-call hours, so, you know, when you're 70, 75, or, and a lot of our residents, you know, they might travel for a month or two out of the year, and that's why we do have onsite staff, just for that reason, is we want that comfort. And of course, security is always a concern, and that's why we try and pick these types of neighborhoods, is our customer wants, our resident wants to feel comfortable.
Right. Absolutely. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to have some people to ask some questions. Yeah, I think that's fine. I think there are plenty of folks who have something to speak about, so I want to make sure everybody signs the list, because we'll basically just go off the list. So we'll do that, we'll take like a quick five-minute recess, and we'll come back and we'll go ahead and take public comment. If you haven't signed the list, please do so. All right. So what we're going to do this, yes, we're going to give everybody who signed up an opportunity to speak. I'm sorry, could we have a little bit of quiet out in the crowd right now? Thanks. All right, so we're going to have everybody who signed up have an opportunity to come up and speak. I just ask that you try not to be repetitive. I know some of you are probably here, and you're going to have some of the same concerns. What we're going to do is, we're going to collect all of your questions. Once everybody's had an opportunity to speak, we'll bring the applicant back up, and we'll go through the questions item by item and address those. All right, so the first person we have on the list is Matt Marquis.
Yes.
Could you just please state your name and your address, just for the record?
Yeah, my name's Matthew Marquis, I live at 2197 Farm Land Drive. Actually, my wife Ashley and I own the property that's adjacent to the dry basin on Farm Land Drive. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, I'm a little nervous, but I appreciate it. I guess I have a couple of comments on each of the items, so I'll try and be brief. I broke it out by item, so it's a little bit easier to follow, but as far as the zoning amendment goes, I enthusiastically support rezoning this area, because I don't like the idea of it being B3 right now, that we're limited to commercial development. I certainly don't want commercial development in that area. That having been said, as far as 1395 goes, as a homeowner who likes to sit on my deck and look out at a nice green space, I'd prefer that the land isn't developed, but I understand I don't own it, you know, I don't have a choice in whether or not it gets developed at all, but I certainly like the plan they've put forward. If they're going to put anything there, I'd rather not be two-story, commercial, you know, heavy residential areas, so. I guess as far as 1396 is concerned, the preliminary development plan, I just had a couple of comments. My property does sit adjacent to the possibility of the planned emergency access. I just wanted to reiterate, I've spoken with David and Jane as well, that, you know, I would prefer that an access not be placed there, adjacent to my property, just for privacy concerns, and then, you know, I, when I purchased my home, I didn't anticipate there being an access there, so I would rather it not, not be there at all. I guess along those same lines, something I heard earlier about the tree preservation, as we move towards final design, I know that there are a couple of alternatives presented as far as how to address a secondary access for emergency access. I guess one of my concerns might be that should some of those alternatives be eliminated because of, you know, a tree preservation balance, would that impact me in the sense that then that emergency access is required, I guess, because right now, it's, it sounds like I think everybody wouldn't like to have that there, or at least I personally wouldn't. I'm just concerned that that may force, force their hand, essentially, would that be required? The second thing is, someone mentioned before, stormwater. I know that that basin, I've lived in that house for five years, the water comes up generally to kind of the base of the tree line that runs parallel to my property line. The only reason I know that is because trash accumulates along the outside of the water, and so I've seen trash at the base of those trees before. It certainly isn't at that level for a long duration, just at the peak of the storm, but again, my concern would be like that stormwater is addressed in the sense that a lot of times when you do those types of analyses, you know, downstream controls are assumed to be unclogged, and, you know, free draining, regular maintenance, you know, but I just wouldn't want that to be detrimental to my property or possibly cause, you know, flooding in my basement if that water level rises because there's additional drainage, or, you know, that maybe some of the assumptions were a little aggressive, so. Those are generally my concerns, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next on the list for this particular topic, Steve Martin. You've already spoken, then you do not need to speak again, thank you. And then the next person on the list is Jane Arthur. Okay. You don't need to speak either?
Not yet.
We're rolling here. Stephen Hicks.
I'm doing great.
Michelle Schram.
Okay.
If you could just state your name and address when you make it up to the microphone.
Well, Michelle Schram, and I'm at 2209 Farm Land Drive. The back of my property is, is three houses down from the waterway in the back, and my questions are, with, what, how many bedrooms are the apartments right behind me, and is it 30-foot? And is it 30-foot from my property line to their building or, you know, from there? And then are they only planning on doing pine trees? Are they going to offer some other kind of trees besides the pine trees? Because in the past, I've seen some like around the waterway dying, you'd have to cut them down with the HOA.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the list, Brandon Feller. Brandon, if you could just state your name and address for the record when you get up there.
My name is Brandon Feller. I live at 128 Garden Court. I'm in the second cul-de-sac of Lantern Chase. From time to time, Steve Martin is also my attorney, but we're on the opposite sides of this issue tonight, but that's okay because Steve's a good guy. But I have to express my concerns with that. We heard the term earlier, the best and highest use for that property because of the awkward placement of it. The best and highest use of that property is what it is today, which is vacant. The second best would be residential, single-family residential. Even that still, I believe, is problematic. If you've ever had your car washed at the car wash at Kroger and it tells you to please pull forward, please pull forward, that's burned into my memory because I can hear it from my property and so will everybody that lives there. I hear the dumpster behind Kroger being dumped before 6:00 AM. So will these people that are paying a premium. I question whether or not they want to pay a premium for the privilege of living behind a Kroger dumpster. Every day, there's not a day that goes by that I don't look out on this property and see wildlife and deer that are on the property. I'm concerned about what happens with that, and if that creates another safety hazard on 37, what happens to where those deer cross? Are they going to end up in the neighborhood? Are they going to be out on the street? I'm also concerned about the connection between the two neighborhoods, aside from the, I understand it has to be there for emergency access, but I would prefer there not be a connection between the two. And I guess my last piece is from my property, it actually sits up higher looking down into this property, a four-foot mound is inconsequential to me. I would urge a requirement for a much higher mound. If it was a 12-foot mound, I would be much more amenable, but a four-foot mound is not going to do anything to provide a buffer for my property. I would urge a no vote.
Thank you. Brian McDonovan. Brian, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Brian McDonough. I live in Lantern Chase Drive. My address is 184 Stone Hope Drive. The reason I'm coming in, I didn't get a chance to be at the initial hearing to talk about the, you know, and question the development of this Baroque, but I've been a longtime resident at Lantern Chase since 2000, and when Troy Farms came in, we had a lot of issues, and I hope not to anticipate this kind of issues with this community. A lot of issues from Troy Farms residents because there was not really a lot of issues where people were trespassing coming into Lantern Chase. Also, our crime kind of went up. We've had people that had car break-ins. So I don't anticipate that from this community, but the concerns I have are, or questions I have is I want to know, what does it really mean to say that it's a 55-plus community? Does it say that you have to be a 55-plus resident long-term and all you have is visitors? Or do you also have residents there that are family members long-term and they could be under 55? Just a question, what is that? My other concern is the traffic. And a positive is if we have sidewalks that connect Lantern Chase through this area to Kroger's, that would be a good thing, but my concern is just the traffic and how the connection is. We have our turn-in at Lantern Chase, but also the other turn-in on 37 into this subdivision. Don't want to increase the accidents. So really, those are my concerns and questions. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Daniel Anderson. You just state your name and address for the record.
Name is Daniel Anderson, 104 Lantern Chase Court. My question is just about the wildlife. How, as far as removal, I mean, does the construction equipment scam away or is there some kind of process to get rid of the deer and rabbits and whatever else lives in the fields? So that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Manuel Rodriguez. Okay, thank you. And is it Andrew Lukens? If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Andrew Lukens at 2215 Farmland Drive. And a few of my questions were, I do remember reading in an earlier draft that this was a 55-plus, and once they reach a certain level, they are allowed to have younger applicants, younger people in the area. I would like that addressed as well as the actual buffer between the houses on Farmland Drive, 30, 150 feet. What exactly is this? And also, my house does sit up on an incline. The, you know, four-foot buffer for a hill does not meet a standard that I would enjoy myself, even with a one-story home. The six-foot trees will do nothing for me. And I believe that was it.
Okay, thank you. All right, that concludes everybody who signed up to speak on this topic. So at this time, we'll ask the applicant to come back up and then we'll just kind of walk through these comments from the public and do our best to address them.
Sure.
I believe one of the questions that was asked was regarding the emergency access, what's needed, what's required? Is there a different place it could be?
Yeah, I can start with this one.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think we had a number, I have in mind a number of questions about the emergency access as well. The plan is showing one additional emergency access. Essentially, once you get into this, you have two ways in and out of this development. Once you get into it, you have a gridiron set of streets, so that's okay. But kind of, I'm going to get up and point at this. Right in here is a little bit of a pinch point. And so, and talking with the developer and our safety forces or engineers, the discussion has been, how do you overcome that pinch point in a way that makes sense? And as late as early this week, is that a way to say that? I think we've been working on four or five, I think five different alternatives than just the one going in the Farmland Drive that you see here. I did talk to Matt Markey early on in the process. He expressed his concerns with that. Obviously, we had some trepidation about that as well, just technically through a basin if nothing else. But we don't really, I don't have that exhibit handy for you. We're just digesting it, but you'll notice that we have condition number 11, that the developer shall achieve compliance with emergency access requirements prior to final development plan approval. And so should this gain approval by council, what we would do is work through those, at least those five alternatives. One of them was essentially connecting back to Troy Farms apartment. It's not a road or anything, it's just for, in the event that something happens, you have to get in or out. One of them was kind of working various kinds of roads to the east of the commons. This has the advantage of not impacting single-family at all. And there was another one in terms of just that pinch point, doing a median divide, it might have to widen that bit of that road, that sort of thing. Lots of engineering considerations to work through for all of those alternatives, but what I can report to you is that there are at least five viable alternatives at a preliminary stage, and we would have to wind those down to what is the most appropriate one on final development plan approval. Obviously, we've heard the comments relative to trying to connect the Farmland Drive with emergency access drive. So in my opinion, to answer Matt's question, for me at ARAI as a plan director and there are other directors and what have you in the process, that would probably be the least desirable one. You weren't the only one that mentioned that here. I think Brandon mentioned that and others mentioned that as well. So that would probably be the least desirable of the five in my mind at this point, and we're at the preliminary stage. I know you're an engineer, so you understand that.
Okay. Staff?
That's good.
Okay. Okay. And then I think the next concern was regarding stormwater.
We haven't reviewed final stormwater design, but we fully expect everything to meet our code and hydraulically, I don't see a lot of challenges. Engineer may chime in, but it's pretty straightforward. I mean, it is a little complex between basins to make sure that you don't have any type of hydraulic issues between the two basins, but that all gets worked out during the final engineering and they have a good team on work, so we're confident.
And then I think there was also a question about the path on what would be the north side of the retention pond. Is that correct, Matt? You had a question about the path on the north side, which would be abutting your property?
Yeah, I should very address that.
Okay.
That's the emergency access.
I just remembered that in my mind and I likened it to the path going around the pond. Yeah, that's good. Do you have anything to follow up on, anything the staff's added on any of those?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then the next question from the public was regarding the number of bedrooms in the units that are directly across from properties in Lantern Chase.
Well, I think the one that Michelle was addressing is the one, do you want me to answer? Right, so those four units, the one at the top is a two-plus, which is two plus a den, and then the next one is a two-bedroom, the next one is a one-bedroom, and the last one is a two-plus. And they are, it is a 30-foot setback and it has the 12-foot mound tree combo.
Mr. Chairman, I think there are a number of questions related to what is the width of the setback and the constitution of setbacks, maybe if I, since we just brought it up in this context, 30 feet in width around the north and the west, and it would be at a minimum of four-foot-high mound. They're going to try to do mounding higher than that where they can, but a minimum of four-foot-high mound and then a total height of mounded trees at a minimum of 12 feet. So if the mound's four feet, the tree they'd have to plant at the initial planting, it would have to be eight feet tall, which is a pretty significant tree at planting for shots, I can tell you that. But if the mound goes up to six feet, then the tree could be six feet. So you get that total of 12-foot of kind of instant screening. If you think about, just to the west of the Troy Farms development, there really isn't a mounding. They did put in evergreen trees that are now, in some cases, 15, 20 years old, depending which part of that you're looking at. And so they've got a pretty significant height to them, but there's no mound component to that at all, which just gives you extra height and extra buffering. And someone also had a question about, maybe it was Michelle or several people about is it pine trees only? And I think that's to be determined. I think it wouldn't just be pine, we just kind of say that. What we mean is evergreen trees so that you have that evergreen screening. What we try to do is work in different varieties of evergreen trees so that if you have, you think of the Emerald Ash Borer, you just use ash trees and an ash borer comes along, all of a sudden you have no ash trees and you don't have that screening anymore.
The screening is also staggered, it's not just one straight line.
It is a staggered course, so we also refer to that as a soldier course, if you will, sort of one here, one here, one here, one here, one here. You want to have the trees have enough room to grow so they don't grow into each other because then you're taking out trees in the future as well. But it's important to change the variety of those trees, and we work with our shade tree commission and our Parks and Natural Resources Director to pick a variety of trees that provides the evergreen screening that we're looking for, but also a variety to avoid blights or that sort of thing. And a staggered course helps you, if one tree has to come out, you still have screening in a front row of that. I think that's a measure of badgers, where he's going with that as well. So best answer to that question. She was raising her hand again. Correct. Again, as part of this process, because we have a specific zoning text here, all the landscaping that you see here is enforceable by us, so they would have to replace it. Obviously, if a tree is 20 feet tall, several years out, they don't replace it with a 20-foot tall tree, but they would have to replace the, all the landscaping. I think that was it on the offer on landscaping.
Yeah, there were just multiple questions.
There were lots of them in that area.
And there was a clarification of what exactly the build line means, 30-foot build line from where it begins and.
Right. So it'd be from the property line. I don't know if you have that exhibit handy lands, but this would essentially be the property line, the boundary between your property and Farmland or these properties to the west and the development site. So the 30 feet would begin there and improve east and south depending on what we're talking about. That's just, you know, you could do 100 feet of width. I can, did it today again, I can go in the back of these cul-de-sacs and see the back end of Troy Farms apartments clear as day, and that's 100 feet. So the important thing is to have some of them, not all, because you do have some of those trees in there and you have some existing trees. But the important thing is to get the right combination of mound height and evergreen screening particularly closer to you. If you sort of do this with a piece of paper, it's harder to see there if I do this. That's the best way I can illustrate that for you. So getting it actually closer to the houses will provide a better screen immediately and in the future. That's why we do it that way, and that's pretty typical of how we approach lots of development as a commission then. This will really give you a layered screening approach towards Troy Farms and the shopping center, so hopefully it might cut down some of that noise that Brandon remarked on from the shopping center in addition to the housing development that'll go here, but it'll provide that instant screening as well.
Okay. Yeah, so the next question was regarding the 55-plus and what implications that actually means.
Okay, so HOPA compliant means the Housing for Older Peoples Act, which is a federal ability to discriminate age to age. And the way that it reads is that once we're occupied, we start occupying, it's 80% of the residents have to have one person who's 55 and above. As we are seeing in Dublin and in Pickington, that we will, we have the ability to rent to 20% of people, which 20% of 90 is not that many. To people who are under 55, our preference is not to, we don't have to buy by that, and we have to keep files, strict files, and with, you know, their IDs and track who's living in there. If someone were to pass away and there's someone there who's not 55-plus, that is, again, you fall in that 80/20. So that's how that works. We want to be, our resident wants us to be 55-plus, and that's what we market to and cater to.
Okay. And then I think there's another question regarding the traffic.
Pedestrian access between the development and Kroger.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's not a sidewalk, correct?
Well, quickly, the answer, the question about pedestrian access between the development and the Westfield Hill Shopping Center site, might be hard to see on the plans, I'm sure it's hard to see up here, but there is a sidewalk connection up the secondary access road. So that's the answer to that, to the shopping center. Additionally, there, we have on our long-range bike and pedestrian plan that we council just adopted, the update of the continuation of the bike path along 37, really to the western edge of the city. And so we are in the stages of planning that path when Trepples came along with their development. And so the idea would be we're going to continue advancing the planning and construction of where the path ends to about the western edge of the city. And Trepples, should they be successful, would build their portion of that. If they're not successful, then I assume that we would move forward and make that part of our bike project as well. So you can think of it that the developer's going to pay for that piece of it, but it'll get done for the plan.
Okay.
And it will be bike pathway?
Will be bike pathway, correct.
Okay. Yeah, that's a great question about the wildlife. I don't know if there's...
Can I enter that one?
Oh, I'd love you to.
Oh, great, I'd be happy to. What happens is I've been in Castle from White for over 23 years. I've seen all of the development around me. So what happens is they all come to my yard. I spend hundreds of dollars a year, okay? So damage can come and eat it, right? The coyotes have increased unbelievably. So I just want to be honest with you. I mean, I'm not against wildlife or anything, but I'm glad you don't have to put up with it. Because those coyotes are going all night long, I can't even let my dog out. And I'm scared to death that she's not coming back, to be quite honest with you. So they'll move. They will move to the next piece of open ground they can. And they seem to run along that creek area. That's just where they're running. And if, you would think there would be less, but there is more wildlife running that creek in my backyard. And as I told my wife, our sport is board, we put out for them every year. They seem to enjoy it, but they, I know a lot of people like them, but I tell you what, they can raise havoc with the yard, okay? But they'll move themselves, they really do. They, they don't just stay there.
That's a good answer.
Thank you.
That's a real life answer.
I think that's a real life answer, actually.
Yeah. So yeah, I think we made it through. There was one question about the use of the property. I can't sit here and say that, yeah, I wouldn't love for this to stay a piece of green forested plain area forever, but a property developer has rights. I mean, that's really the best way to answer that question. I don't know if anybody wants to add anything to that, but that's...
Yeah, the only other thing I would say is being a residential development, there will be more open space and preserved trees than there would be under any, any form of straight commercial development, which can have building and just parking coverage on their lot in excess of what residential can. Now, there's an exhibit in the packet, I encourage you to look at it, that details out the amount of open space and green space in addition to the buffer area. And obviously, as we get into final development plan, the tree preserves in this.
And in all of our projects, that's very important to us. And that's why we have so much green space in the 20 acres that we do have. It is not a big piece of property. And it's important to our resident to be able to step outside and have some privacy and some green space. And again, we have a community garden and someplace to plant something. So, so I think that that's very much part of our brand is to have that.
Curious, how does this compare as far as size to the other two properties you mentioned?
Same.
Same, about 20 acres?
Well, Dublin is actually 13 acres and we have 86 units on there. So it's tight, but we are surrounded. Only on one side of it is residential. And the other side is Scioto School. And then we have a walking path. Now, at Pickerington, we have far more residential on the perimeter of our project. But, and that unit, that development is 95 units. And that's 22 acres. So there's, but we're in a stream protection corridor zone. So, you know, we have that riparian way that we had to deal with. That's why we have a little more acreage there, but...
So are you hearing the same kinds of concerns tonight that you probably heard at Pickerington and Dublin?
Exactly. I mean, this is exactly, exactly the same. Just, I would, I'd say more of an understanding, you know, what, because it is a new product and it's not, you know, it's not your typical three-story walk-up apartment or, you know, and there's plenty of parking, you know. So, so it's a little less, it's a lot less offensive, you know, we do, so...
Okay. Any other questions from the commission for the applicant? All right, I think we've gone through all the questions. So I guess I'll bring it back to the commission and ask what the wish of the commission is.
Well, this is just preliminary.
Correct.
And there can be changes and so on during the development process. But on that, I guess I would go ahead and move to adopt 2017-1394 with all staff recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Badger?
Second.
Second by Mr. Halter?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Prawl?
Yes.
Councilman Helleringer?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
Okay. Well, and along that line, I would move to approve 2017-1395 with all staff recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Badger?
Second.
Second by Mr. Halter?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Prawl?
Yes.
Councilman Helleringer?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes.
And then move to approve item 2017-1396 with all staff recommendations.
Motion by Mr. Badger?
Second.
Second by Mr. Halter?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Halter?
Yes.
Mr. Prawl?
Yes.
Councilman Helleringer?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mansouris?
Yes.
Chairman Simpson?
Yes. Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to the next item on tonight's regular business, item B. Could the clerk please read that into the record?
Item B, 2017-1472, a request by George Rodman for a concept plan review for the Rodman Property Mixed Use Development on four parcels containing approximately 18.78 acres on property zone R3, one-family residential district located on the west side of Houck Road, just north of Green Lawn Drive.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is a concept review, no action taken by the commission tonight. The subject site is zone R3, the entire development. The owner is proposing a mixed-use development that would include about 20,000-plus square feet of office, 40 condominium units and one single-family house on the subject site. The comprehensive land use plan has the eastern portion of the site, meaning that's the single-family. The western portion, moderate density, multifamily, the Delaware Run subarea. The proposed single-family condominium use has a density of about 2.43 acres on the site. And there is office uses to the north and east of this site. Office land use designation to the north and east. So from our perspective, it appears that the proposal is consistent with the mixed-use land use, or with the, with the adjacent uses. If this is approved, the comprehensive plan would have to be amended to mixed use to allow these uses. And that would also require planning commission and council approval. From a zoning perspective, the applicant would be requesting a planned mixed-use overlay district similar to the proposal we just had, which allows the mixture of the uses with the underlying R3 zoning district. From an engineering perspective, the department prepared a preliminary engineering technical review of this, addressed the transportation, stormwater, sanitary and water lines. A more, if this goes forward to preliminary planning rezoning, they need to do a stormwater management plan on the subject site. Also, a trip generation study would need to be performed to determine if a traffic impact study would be required to determine any roadway improvements that may be required on Houck Road and Green Lawn Drive. Also, a contribution of $50,000 would be required for the construction of a future turn lane on Houck Road. So you can see this is the subject site, northern portion of this site in the 100-year floodplain. We'll be touching the northern half of this site. The southern half, see there's trees on the site and there's a existing pond that would likely be enlarged as a retention basin. There's an existing house on the site that would be raised. And the existing former schoolhouse on the southeastern portion of the site would be renovated into an office building. This is the existing conditions, north is to your left. And obviously, that's the run just north of the site. You can see the 100-year floodplain and the hatch. And then you can see the existing pond and the house, and the schoolhouse southeastern portion of the site. This is the proposed plan. The southeastern portion, they'd be proposing, as I said, to renovate the existing schoolhouse into an office building. There'd be two 10,000-square-foot office buildings proposed, surrounded by 90-car parking lot, 90-space parking lot. The two office buildings would be two stories in height from Green Lawn Drive. There'd be a single story if we closed the grade slope to the north, the walkout two-story from Houck Road. Just the west of that would be 40 condominium units and seven buildings. Typical condominium would be four and six-unit buildings. Then on the north, on the southwestern portion of the site would be a one, two, one and a quarter acre single-family lot for the, there's two owners of this subject property and apparently he constructed his house at that location. Is our understanding. Staff would recommend additional overflow parking for the condominium units on the subject development as we move forward, if this moves forward through the process. This is enlargement of the site plan. From a landscaping perspect, perspective, I guess, from a traffic perspective, access to the site from Houck Road would be a right-in, right-out from Houck Road. Green Lawn Drive would be the second access point and that'd be a full movement curb cut. The internal streets would be private, but built to public standards. A sidewalk would be required along Houck Road and Green Lawn Drive. And a sidewalk on one side of the private streets would be required. That's fairly typical of all our developments similar to this. From a landscaping perspective, the applicant will require to install street trees, parking lot landscaping, foundation landscaping and perimeter mounting and buffering to the west and south adjacent to the condos to the west and the single-family residents to the south that are in the township. Staff would recommend that the, that the heavily tree buffer along Green Lawn Drive remain tree buffer and the like that would buffer the proposed development from the residence, single-family residence to the south. Obviously, this site is heavily wooded. They'd need to do a tree survey to determine how many trees would be removed and how many would remain. Staff suggested the owner consider the option of making the area within the 100-year floodplain a conservation area or easement. The trees in this suggested conservation area could potentially be counted and for the removal of any trees on the site, similar to the last application. Any signage would have to meet the gateways and corridors plan. A lighting plan would be needed for the entire development to achieve compliance with the zoning code. A community impact assessment would be required in an environmental analysis map. From a building and design perspective, they show some examples of what the office buildings may look like. They appear to be in brick, 100% brick, which staff would encourage. The condos also appear to be brick, which staff would also encourage. That and the single-family development would have to meet our minimum design guidelines in chapter 1171. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman, as a commission, I'd just add that appreciate Mr. Rodman and former mayor Gary Milner bringing for this application. Like, I got in here in 2005 and I don't remember what version of the extension of the last reflections on Cottage Pond we were on, but it was, we were probably on number four or something by that time. I think as Lance mentioned, there were a number of extensions to that over the course of a lot of years. But, but Mayor Milner is here because he does own a piece of ground kind of in the middle of this parcel right now. Not surrounded by this parcel, not in the middle of it, but surrounded by this parcel that Mr. Rodman owns. And so you can see on the site plan that there is a notion here to effectively swap where his parcel would be and put him still in a condition that he is, that he desires and allow him to build his forever home. Is that, is that fair, Gary, from the forever home? While the development still happens around him. Huh? Almost forever? You never know. Forever's a long time. So that's why it's part of this application. And I think those two have worked out in concept, this, this arrangement makes sense to us as staff as well. Overall, I think you don't have the benefit of seeing the five or six versions of this plan before we got to this point. But I think the applicant has worked well with us up to this point to come to a development plan that is, seems at the conceptual level fairly balanced in terms of scale of residential units, some commercial again with Houck Road, preserving the old schools. So we're here to talk about all that and, gentlemen, it's really your, your concept plan this evening and to receive feedback from the commission. I don't know if you want maybe them to come up and tell you about the project as well.
I think that makes sense. Yeah, go ahead and come on up and just say your name and your address for the record.
Probably bail on me.
Turned around and nobody was there.
I've had that feeling before.
I'm Joe Place, Plan for Land. I've been working for the past year, trying to work through some concepts and glad we're here. We, we talked through with neighbors, I think I'm reading the date up there, it's in March. George hosted a community meeting. Part of the contention that we heard from a lot of folks was density and not seeing anything different than really what's in the neighborhood today. So we modeled after the Hanover Port condominiums, the footprint that's on here. And the conceptual standpoint is theirs. We don't have an end user currently, but we'll be working toward that process. And our interest is to move forward with their marketing of the property to go ahead and proceed with a rezoning preliminary plan and try to secure approval. We do have a couple of commercial buildings shown on there. And as Dave mentioned, we're, we're looking at single-story scale, which seemed to be popular along the Green Lawn side. And because of the slope there, we think we can get walkouts to work pretty well. Those buildings would mimic the character of this old school building. So that's our, our main interest there. I didn't have a whole bunch to add to the presentation as it was submitted there. I think our, our big interest is to proceed. And I was taking notes on some of the items that have got to get submitted to you. I do think as far as traffic goes, it sounds like it's been studied in depth on Houck Road there. So we can do some traffic count numbers, but hopefully there's a pretty good handle on what's happening. We did want to limit the amount of impacts on Green Lawn with the existing trees that are there. We think this will actually just be, it looks like one additional cut through in addition to the, to Gary's driveway. right at the front door of somebody's home. And, um, that's conceptual as far as Gary's house. I'm sure, uh, he'll have some more orientation layout there, but, um, the idea was to, uh, try to lay out the retention basin, uh, as a drainage easement across that lot and to utilize, um, additional acres that were granted to, uh, to Gary as part of the, uh, density of the overall project. Uh, but we'll be, uh, allowing the wildlife to retain in the floodplain area. We don't have to make anybody move out down there, so I like the conservation idea. I think that works.
Let's just go right down. Let's go over to his house.
I think that's all I had unless George had anything to add. Interested, yeah, hearing your feedback on it.
Okay.
I have nothing to add. Joe's covered it very well.
All right. All right, well, what's our feedback for?
The only item, I, I, I think, I think a good layout, okay? And, and condominiums and a couple of commercial buildings, but I, I see that in law because I'm personally. Uh, my big concern, uh, is to right-in, right-out, uh, there on Howe Road. Since a high percentage of people, this has been my perception, living across, well, uh, CBS is it, that sign up there is the most worthless thing in the world because they don't want to go with it, okay? And one of these days, there's going to be one heck of an accident down there, okay? There's somebody's going to pop on the back of somebody. Yeah. If you want to limit to a certain extent the amount of traffic on green lawn, okay? Which is still built to township specifications, okay? Is, is to do away with that right-in and right-out and just accept it as a full, full turn. Because it isn't any better on top of that hill than what it is that far down. You know, I know there's a lot more traffic than what a single family has, the condominium did. But I think, you know, it's, it's the way it is, people will know if they're turning left or right, which I think is right around with that right way of now, is that correct?
True.
You know, I, I, I just think it, it, it makes a lot of sense just to leave that. It, you don't have a high density in there. We're not talking about, you know, 70, 80 people back in here. It's a low density, okay? And I think that if you really wanted to cut back the traffic on green lawn, you would have no turns on green lawn off Howe Road. So the people coming out of there would have to go down green lawn and then come out on, um, in the main street there.
Grand Circuit.
Back there. But I mean, someday that's supposed to have a traffic light.
Grand Circuit.
Grand Circuit someday. So they can go to Warrensburg and go out to Kroger's like, or go up there and go out, out the other door to 37. I, I think, you know, your concern about traffic on green lawn, that's awful traffic on green lawn, because you wouldn't have the access off Howe Road going in there, which you're still going to have anyway, so, you know, as I say, Dave, I don't know if they can't read, they don't want to read, or they, they just don't care.
I think it's, it's not everybody else, they just don't care.
You do make a good point and, uh, yesterday I took the dog to the veterinary, down the street from you and, um, I had to wait. It, it is a right, uh, left turn, whichever way you want to go. We're on a slope of a hill and, uh, perhaps timing of the two lights at the end of, um, Howe Road might be able to help that. Uh, we have one at Kroger's at Central Avenue and we have one at the, uh, William Street. And there was a, a moment that I could get out because there wasn't coming anything from the north and there wasn't anything coming from the south.
Yeah, the problem with the north is, is, is that they can come over that hill so quickly and they can make the turn off Central Avenue on Howe Road and you can't see them make that turn, okay? Now, the city does go up there certain times and they'll catch the bushes down, okay? Harmony Yard are doing a lot more often because, I mean, I've lived there for 23 years and I'm telling you, you know, you better look and relook and relook because they come over that hill, not that they're speedy, okay? But even 35 miles an hour, when you, when they start making that turn, you finally see them down to my street, they cover that to hurry, you know, they really do. Well, yours is so much farther down.
Yours is right, almost right up against the, uh, the bridge.
Yeah, oh yeah. It, it, it's directly across the building, okay? Which, I mean, I, the traffic here in the road because, you know, you're building more houses and, and, you know, it just, but I don't, when I go there, there was nothing there, okay? And I'm not complaining, but, you know, because that's just the way, you know, you have increase. But, uh, no, I think your plan here is good. I think you ought to get serious thought about that turn in off Howe Road, where we want to limit that. Because if you limit that, you're going to put a lot more up there on green lawn. And they're going to come out of green lawn and that was just as bad, even now. Coming out of green lawn on Howe Road is.
Yeah, because that's where you're going to.
Well, because you've got their offset. You've got green lawn and then you've got them coming out, Trillium. It's not like they actually want to have a road. It's a little bit offset there. And it can, it can get a little, a little concerning there. So I think we need to look at that and, and get serious. I, I, I know you don't want full turn on there, but I really think that maybe that's going to be the best thing.
Our main concern would be the left turns waiting to turn into the site, um, during peak hour, obviously. Uh, it's only going to take one car waiting to turn into the site. It's going to back and spend a great lot of havoc on Howe Road and cause some rear-end accidents. Um, yeah, it's not an easy solution, uh, keeping cars from a bane to a bane other than ticketing them, but we can't, obviously, our chief champion's just.
People went the wrong way.
We've talked about it.
Four tires. They'll only do that once.
One of these days, one of these days when we have automatic driving cars, they wouldn't be allowed to do that.
That's something that happened.
But we do, just, you know, in our, in our overall city's transportation plan, we have a intersection improvement plan for green lawn. Um, it's going to be expensive because of the topography and the things that you've mentioned. Um, and that's why we want to put on the table a discussion with the applicant about possibly contributing to that. Um, we'd like to do a turn lane all along Howe, but once you get into the bridge, uh, center turn lane, it really, it gets into seven figures. So, um, if we have, if we only are able to put one turn lane along that stretch of road between Howe or between William and Central, we would pick the public street, green lawn.
Yep.
So, uh, that's kind of the thought process behind having all the full access off of green lawn.
I mean, I, I'm just, I'm looking, I'm seriously just a, a driving standpoint, okay?
So why we're here for.
I've never claimed to be a traffic engineer.
Well, that's part of the reason we bring the concept in front of you, so we can get this kind of feedback.
But other than that, I, I, I really do like, I like the concept and I live as close to it as anybody else.
What kind of use would you be looking for in those, uh, two office buildings?
We, we, general, uh, general office and, uh, maybe medical office. We look at, uh, from probably from a traffic standpoint, traffic count, probably look at one of each. Um, but I, I don't know that, I think general office is probably where it would be.
And after hearing the previous, uh, 55 and older, um, certainly there's going to be, uh, services that they need close by that we could cater to, offers rental space
Curious if the, uh, owner of the single-family home have to be part of the HOA that be running the condominiums as well?
I don't. That, that was part of our question is.
Make sure I understand what Gary said.
Uh, part of our question was, do we need to have Gary a part of the PRD, uh, that we're submitting for the overall rezoning here? Um, and obviously even being a part of that, he can still be excluded from the community association, but, uh, we were curious, uh, process, how we, how we proceeded this one. Um, knowing that we got two signatures to the, to the rezon.
Yeah, it just made the most sense.
Separate them or?
You, you had a guy surrounded by a, a property that had some, has some rights, but has some development ideas, so it made sense to, uh, just have them as part of the, uh, the overall application. If they, uh, if they worked out a deal right now today and they just swapped property, um, Gary would have, uh, as a single-family lot, he would have rights where he could start development on that site, uh, today. Obviously, George and the rest of the plan requires, uh, requires rezoning and requires going through that process, so.
If, if we did do that, would we be penalized density? Would that impact our ability to have?
No, I think that the plan's a plan and we'd write the text, I, you know, the density is, uh, you know, whatever at the end of the day we calculate it to be, uh, based on what your proposal is, but I think there's pretty positive feedback on, at least conceptually, um, pretty positive non-binding feedback, is that what I'm supposed to say?
Yes.
On, uh, on this plan to this point. So I don't think it'd worry about the density question would be my answer to. And I know Gary and, and his wife are chomping at the bit to get going here, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think overall what you're planning in terms of building, design, building size, placement, makes perfect sense. I, I have no objections. I do think the traffic's a concern for sure.
Well, and Howe Road and, you know, that section of Howe Road is just the albatross on, on the west side of, of the city and, and obviously we don't have any money to do anything with it at this point in time, but it's something that needs to be addressed and probably, but the, the bigger thing is, is then, like you pointed out, that green lawn being at township standards at that point, um, you know, that's, it's just going to bite us in the back end sooner or later, but it really has nothing to do with this development per se. It's just a matter that, that, that bill's going to come due a lot sooner as, as we get development like this in place, so.
Um, council member, I mean, this, this, speaking of biting in the rear, this comment may do it too, but I think also, uh, we discussed, um, and that's on the long-range transportation plan for Valley Side Drive to go across Delaware Run area, just, it really is just to the east of this location. Because between Howe Road and downtown, you really don't have another, you have just Howe. So it feels a lot more pressure for traffic on the whole west side than if we had that Valley Side Drive connection and obviously there's other implications for our fire station and moving emergency services around the area, all to the Valley Side too. Just while we're on that topic, so it isn't just, it isn't just a one, uh, albatross Howe Road. It is two, Valley Side and.
Yeah. The, the Valley Side Drive is probably the single most important connection we could make in our overall city's transportation plan right now. That's the city engineer's opinion.
Well, and unfortunately, it was, it was highly polarizing when it came to the road levy last time. The typically, the typical NIMBY, uh, had, I know, hard to imagine.
Any, any other feedback for the applicant this evening?
It'd be just similar comment. It doesn't look like it's out of proportion for the comprehensive plan at all. I mean, it seems to fit that area and that, those uses up in that area.
I know we don't have public comment, um, uh, Gary being an applicant as well or part of the, uh, the, uh, site plan, I didn't know if he had anything to add to that.
I guess, it stood, sorry, Mary, so I have to give your name and address.
Gary Muller, 644 Here's Boulevard, hopefully sometime soon to be getting that. If, if you could clarify to them and help them also understand that it's not going to delay the process, the sooner we get this land swap. I mean, we've had, we were going to start building like the first of April, going out of tragic death in the family and then fighting through a tragic illness right now, so we would really, really like to get this done. And I think that for whatever reason, I think these guys haven't been comfortable like pushing anything out of survey or so. All I, all I need is a survey, a swap of the deeds and.
We, we wanted to make sure we had comfortable feedback on the plan overall, so that was our big objective tonight.
And I don't think, based on a plan coming forward that's substantially like this or a little bit less density, uh, I don't know how you do much more than this on this piece anyway, um, I don't think you have to worry about Gary's piece relative to what you have proposed here, so you could free him up to move forward if you, obviously if the two private parties can work that out.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Well, there's no, uh, commission action required this evening? So then we'll move into the next part of tonight's, uh, agenda, which is the planning director's report.
This is a public hearing technically, are we?
It's at the commission's pleasure, um, you can allow public comment or not.
Yeah, absolutely. Please come forward.
Gentlemen came out tonight?
No, absolutely, come forward.
Just state your name and address for the record.
Chris Wise Carver, 1800 Downs Chapel Drive, Trillium Condominiums. I'm a unit owner there and a board member. Uh, we became aware of this just, you know, back in March, I guess, when the first process went through and I wanted to reiterate what we were talking about here on the traffic congestion. I've lived here 15 years and the city's expanded Howe Road to the north off Central, made it three lanes with left turns in and out of the streets. They've gone south off William Street, they're down to Pittsburgh Drive and done that. That half-mile stretch of Howe Road between Central and William is just the small area of the hour glasses you come down through it, all the traffic filters into. Uh, I don't think we as a condominium project have any problem with the condominiums as a single-family home there. My concern and I think our concern from Trillium is the fact that now we're taking our three piece of land that predominantly has been residential up and down Howe Road, all the way from Pittsburgh up to Merrick, Merrick up there. And now we're going to put a commercial business with 20,000 square feet of office space right on the corner of Green Lawn and Howe. That road there is narrow now and without right turn and left turn lanes in and out there, it's going to be a nightmare. I mean, when I down Chapel, seven to nine o'clock in the morning and four to seven o'clock at night, half the time you just gotta, if you want to go left down to William Street, you gotta turn right and go up to Central around that way because you just can't make that right-hand turn, right, left-hand turn. And I think putting that size office space on that corner with possibility of 200 people working in there and going in and out Monday through Friday during the day, it's just going to make a nightmare until Howe Road is really wide. Why doesn't it make sense to move that commercial business up on Central of CBS where the land is already developed up there? Or even better yet, go down the southwest corner of Howe and William Street where the infrastructure's already in for a shopping center, office building, whatever you might want to put in there. Plus they have access out onto William Street and out onto South Howe Road there. So I think that's, that's a problem there. We also, with that being right at the corner, I assume there would be screening of parking lot lighting and so forth around those buildings and so forth. So, uh, that's just a major issue, but I think traffic is the real issue. That bottleneck on Howe Road is just a nightmare now and putting 40 condos probably isn't going to do much to it, but putting in another 200 people working in there with cars and clients going in and out of there all the time is just going to be a, a real nightmare because that hill right there, Green Lawn and Downs Chapel, you know, people come flying up from William Street and so forth and, uh, there's been a lot of near accidents there already. So I think that really needs to be considered before we approve some type of commercial development on that corner. Keep it R three or residential of some sort.
I don't know if you caught of a, a traffic study would be required, needed to be. This is just a concept plan.
Yeah, I understand.
So just so you're sure, so the next step then would be kind of like the last case, I don't know if you were here for last case, but it would be a rezoning, a formal preliminary plan as part of that process, um, based on the uses that come forward during that, they'd have to do a formal traffic study, which will help answer the questions that you're asking to them.
Yeah, the developer would have to determine the number of trips generated and based upon that, that would either require or not need the traffic impact study. So that would be a step that we'd have to get to once they get further into the planning process. It would be based on trips generated by this development.
I just want to make sure you understood where we're at.
Yeah, I understand. No, I've been through this before. I'm going to have to check, so, you know, we've been through a lot of that. When the next plan comes in, whether there is a review and so forth, how would it be notified? By mail? And what is the distance of that property?
Yeah, because of the rezoning, there would be. Yeah, because it's a rezoning, there would be a sign on the site, maybe two on each of the streets or maybe right at the corner to try to catch everybody. And then there would be a notification that goes out and notification to the, we usually do it because that's in the paper as well.
Yeah, it's 150 feet.
150 feet?
Exclusively of the road. So some trillion of them will be in that buffer.
It's not much. I know some cities have 500 feet or something like that, so 150 feet.
150 is not a fit.
Yeah, okay.
But the sign will be on the site too. Frankly, as it looked to me, I'd probably do away with individual notice and noticing, especially noticing the paper anymore. Sorry, bringing it up. The signs on the site get more people's attention than anything, just in my experience. But we do all three ways.
Okay, like, thanks, commission, and we'll be looking for notification.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, the planning director's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As you know, we got a little break at the beginning of this month, which means we have less break at the end of this month, going into August. So in just a couple of weeks, we'll be back here again for another planning commission session. Lance, do you want to let us know what's on the docket?
Right now, we have two cases. McDonald's on the US 23 North is raising their building and they're going to construct a new building. So we'll see that next month. And also, the outlaw just west of Panera, we'll see a, about a five, 6,000 square foot retail building, strips that are going there.
Okay. We are working with a number of the franchises, Wendy's and McDonald's and Kentucky Fried Chicken. There seems to be some franchise new building rehabilitation money around. So some of these will, are minor enough, we feel we can handle them. Staff levels, home will rise to development plan exemptions and obviously, full development plans. Recall the one on the north, the north side of town actually has an approved plan. Some of you will recall that it has an approved plan. So this is really an amendment to that plan. It's been a few years, so they have a new model and it has some improvements to the access for our engineers. I've been answering questions right now.
Thank you for your brief report. It's very brief tonight.
Brief, the hour is late. Well, anybody else, clerks reminding me, is anybody else going to miss in August? I don't think Mr. Volnick will be here. To be determined.
I will not be here.
Okay.
By 11:00. I will not be here.
Amen.
So maybe five. You're not going to be here either?
I most likely will, but not as good a man as I am here. You know, I sat here last month, you met Jeff, is actually now the village inspector for Plain City.
Oh, geez. So. Wait a minute, hold on a second. I think I just put one and one together here.
Okay.
And so you'll see another new face, maybe in August.
Maybe.
Sitting here. So we've already hired somebody who's. Are we happy to introduce him?
Thank you for mentioning that. We're also going through a hiring process for zoning officer. So in August, hopefully I'll have more of an announcement for you in that regard.
Some new faces again.
You'll see, hopefully, in the coming months, you'll see some new faces on our side too, which we, both departments need capacity. As you know, cases come before you and you know how many permits we issue and it's, it's very busy, which is better than the alternative of.
Not going to slow down anytime soon either.
It does not appear like.
All right. Next item on the agenda, commission member comments and discussion. Start with you.
I have nothing.
Nothing?
George. Just, just one question. Dave, any update on, what is that, 250 Central, the house there at Channing?
No, I'm going to have to get back to you about that. I was gonna, we'll give you a quick update. BP got painted.
Yay. It's always a bonus.
So that was in process. I don't know if you caught that. And then I think I updated you on some of your other gas station questions. We have done some notices. We did do code enforcement on, on the ones we talked about. They were pretty minimal issues. The fill up is obviously gone through a variety of issues through the last few years. It continues not to look very good, obviously. I'm not telling anybody anything you don't know already, but it would be nice to see some real investment in that property in some of those way that's supposed to.
And maybe some new visque over, right? It looks so bad down there right now. That's just, that's just atrocious.
It's like dueling, like following apart gas stations. That's all I have.
Nothing?
Any truth to the rumor, I guess, of a corner of London Road and Liberty turning into, it will be a new gas station going in there, new brand?
Oh, London.
Yeah, yeah, the old cigarette.
I don't know. Don't know yet, but what I can tell you is that I believe that property, the whole property has got, and you recall, it's the field to the east of Washington as well because that development extended that piece of Washington.
Across Washington.
Yeah, so it's, all of that went into receivership, I believe, and that had to go through obviously that process, court process. And I believe that that property has now been purchased, including the building, and they're working with the gas station operator to try to refill that, the end of that building, actually technically to fulfill the, some of the outstanding original requirements of that development, which we still have outstanding orders later on. And then they would fill the rest of that building with other in mind. Hopefully, we'll see some new energy and tenants in that building and provide services to the neighborhood.
Great.
It's been vacant for.
Most of it's been vacant.
Pretty much the whole time I've been here.
Except for the gas station, none of them.
The gas station, and the gas station wasn't even in there for that long, so. I guess it was United Smokes before and it kind of morphed into United Smokes and a gas station and then it went out.
This is before you started, but I just started. They had promised the Grater's ice cream.
That's easy for you to say now.
I see that worked out.
What else have they, Piata? Oh, wait, that wasn't a thing then.
Just one comment, it was good to see that they're at least cleared the buildings for the new fire station area on the southeast side, so it'd be nice to see some timeframe on groundbreaking over there.
I'll get you that. Get all the animals come to your backyard?
Yeah, they're on you there. There was another donut just north of that that cleared out, so, yeah.
And I don't really have anything. Thank you to staff as always and our wonderful clerk for your excellent job this evening and with all the cases that you guys worked on.
Hope we know living with her.
I probably should just let you know, if, if there are any Wendy's cases that come into this commission, I don't know that I'll be able to participate in any of that discussion in the future since I'm making a little bit of a job change. Just something to keep in the back of your mind.
Bit of a hint there?
Nope. But that's, that's all I have. Next regular meeting, August 2nd, 2017, and we are adjourned for the evening.
Thank you.
Wendy's bound.